This is officially a meeting of the Board of Finance today. But we're delighted to have with us the Board of Ed and the Board of Selectmen and other distinguished guests. But let's start with the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, a few things. We would like to start by recognizing one of our members who has served us long and well on the board. Jeff Lumenthal, his last meeting is tonight. And we're going to go ahead and recognize him now because the chance he might have just slipped out. Ants, A.D., and birds, and A.D. So, yeah, we have a little something. So you just want to recap what the Board of the Ants previous to that?
I was part of that. I was a member of the Board of Ed and part of that. It should be exciting.
Great.
Thank you very much for your service.
We would also... So in conjunction with that, we'd also like to congratulate those that were elected in the election a couple of weeks ago. And certainly for our board, we are delighted that Eric stood with us and that we'll have Lisa joining us.
It's much better over here.
And congratulations to those else that were elected. Eric, a woman, glad to have you here tonight, as well as others who, if I don't mention by name, I apologize. It's always interesting to have these board, these kind of meetings right before the changeover because it is the beauty of a country where governments and the overlapping features of the boards. But I appreciate everybody's flexibility on doing it for us tonight. You know, I thought what we would do is start with just a very brief presentation. You know, this has been such an interesting year and it continues. We have a budget that is finally approved. Everybody took care, decided to leave, and then less than two weeks later, you know, they're not really going off with the changes. And I think it just underscored that the environment is not settled. The world will continue to be a state of flux. The state has serious, serious issues that were not resolved by the passage of... But a bunch of people glad to have John with us today. Appreciate all your support. So as we go through this, I also want to caveat very strongly that the slides unfortunately may not have a chance as a Board of Ants to have a meeting. So these are suggested guidance to the two boards. Based on analysis that I've done, which I certainly don't represent the unanimous opinion of our board members. I appreciate you speaking up, especially in the example that you want to highlight the issues that are not covered. And the main importance of this meeting is to start the dialogue again as we look out to the 2018, 2019. So that your respective boards and the staff necessary that builds these budgets from bottom up can understand some of the issues that we as approvers of the ultimate corporations for these budgets want you to think about as you look. We recognize how difficult the situations are. We never really do a zero-based budgeting. We want to sort of start where we're... Hopefully over the next year or two or more, have continued dialogue about more strategic, long-range planning that will affect where we are. So this is our effort to try to encourage you to be thinking about that early on. So with that, why don't we just go through our board presentation? Glad to take questions and certainly would sort of bring up issues. Two, two of these should be aware of as I spoke with Mason beforehand. Because there's some pressure and issues that we can't quite address. So every year we do this relative to the sensitivity. We represent the taxpayers, the Board of Finance does. And so every time we spend another half million dollars more, it has to come out of the tax revenues. And then we represent 22,000, 22,000 bills. I think we everybody's gotten pretty used to the sensitivity models that we use. But just in order of magnitude, a million dollars is almost half of the war for the budget that we had last year. So, you know, I think what the guidance that we, you know, we've decided this year, we, me and Sean, and hopefully endorsed by the board, that we're going to try to give a hard cap instead of a range because I think it's an easier target to think about getting to. And it's a hard one. And we want to show you the issues around where we think we are and what other issues that we can get to serve us. The other thing is, of course, we want to acknowledge that we have deferred two large projects last year. And so as we think about the go-ahead budgets and where we're going to set them, or how much of the fund reserve might be available for use, is to try to put those big expenditure items back active in the plans where they are. That's a bit, we move forward, we move back, but that's a big part of the conversation. So if you look at the preliminary Board of Selectmen expenditure view, these are the approved budgets for '18, the major line item expenses, and the projected expense increase for the '19 budget. This again assumes in the large category of salaries, level headcount. And items that are known, or at least we have some evidence of what those future expenses could be. The next largest category, which is benefits and liability insurance. If you take those two out, you've got 75% of the budget. What we did do though in doing this comparison, we took out the $2.5 million contingent expense that was in the 2018 budget. The total 20.1 million is never the 20, but again, so we're comparing actual expenditure is not... And then on the Board of Ed, we did the same thing. The salary increases are based on the negotiated contract adjustments, up to 2.3% to 2.8% range. Again, assuming level headcount. Big item is the benefits and liability insurance. And again, if you take those two, 58 million out of the 68 million, the rest are important. All right? Yeah, these are percentage increases. This is the projected increase from the fiscal '18 budget to the 19 budget.
Where do you come up with these percentages? There's a 5% to 7% increase, 7% to 8%.
So I did speak with Tom Roy before that. We have an energy consultant that we want, and Tom checked with two energy consultants. So these are based on official estimates that are out there. In fact, we're seeing gases going up, so that's right.
And one of the things I have, and I also have a question about moving the road money back into operating funds. I would venture to say probably all of us agree that I would move it in capital now, but it wasn't already, but I also am not comfortable moving it back because it's going to cause a big increase in the operating.
What we're referring to is the 127,000 that we took from TAR, the machine. Do you remember we gave some... So that's not the capital that Barbara was talking about. This was in anticipation of the $6 to $7 hit. So that's just the shift we made on the movement page.
All right. So looking out, one of the reasons that notwithstanding the fact that both those budgets are up 2.5% to 2.5%, that we are trying to give guidance is that we believe there are still more shoes to rock, more money to be pushed back down. And although we survived multiple attacks on the financial action, it's right there in the governor's budget, right up to the very end. I don't think that issues can go away. Probably is all somehow going to show. We already had, I mentioned, about $31,000 just went out just last week after the budget. And so that took about two weeks. And then the renter's rebate and elderly circuit breaker. Sean explained to me, just a lot like my car tax thing, it's important to have developed. It's just the kind of thing where they push money back. And this is an example of real time. Do we want to hear about how Sean gave them the two numbers?
Sure. So both of these, again, I think were surprises in the budget that weren't talked about really until after they adopted the budget. But in the case of, between the two, we're looking at about $100,000 worth of revenue loss. I say revenue loss because although there was a bridge and some confusion as to whether we'd be paying this or not, ultimately, the state has agreed to still administer the programs, but take the amount that it costs to run them, or in one case, 50% of that, and withhold it from other state grants, from towns, depending on the town, which grants they have. So this would, again, be more of a revenue challenge. But yeah, these are both programs that help some of the media certainly. And the renter's rebate programs administered by Social Services. There's an application process, typically OPM mails out the checks. There was some threat that we would have to start mailing out the checks, which would be a little different actual expenditure impact. But again, it looks like, no, they're just going to have us fund half of it by taking it out of money they otherwise sent in to us. And that's happening, not just in fiscal, that's happening in real time. And the circuit breaker, you may remember from the complicated mill rate worksheet, that I break out the elderly piece of the grant list. It's about $17 million in grant list values. Ultimately, what happens there is we tax that at 89% and the other 11% is kicked in as savings from the state of Connecticut. They're now not going to pay that 11% anymore, which is about $72,000 to $73,000, depending on the supply. So again, that's revenue reversal, we would not get, so we would continue to offer the same.
To order of magnitude, a couple hundred thousand dollars. And then the four question marks, just don't know what next year's one. Have you put in four or five?
I was five.
All right, thanks. So in looking at the revenue picture, we actually got an estimate of the assessor that the grant list was to be increasing between 1.5% and 2%. This is not based on rebow. That won't happen until the fall. But this is just...
It is on the...
But it's based on rebow.
Did it? We're waiting for the rebound reports in December.
But it takes into account new construction that will be online. So that's about $1,003,000 to $1,007,000 in increased tax revenue, includes some additions. So when we put together our mill rate worksheet, we assumed that we would get 20% less from the state aid numbers that were adopted into the year. That's something that sort of traditionally Sean, right, this little worker. Given the history of the old, it's a couple of budgets discussion. The last second. The first full year 19, full year revenue. That's this. That seems fair.
That's right.
Yeah. So I'm happy that most of the property categories, commercial properties, I correct?
Real estate, real property.
Yeah. And we're...
Resident National Government.
And the rebow is counted at up to 2% increase, I think we read.
Right. So the rebow company would be issuing their report to you, David, typically the first or second December. His job then is to go through that and he ultimately has to publish by the end of January. What we tried to do, and what he's been resistant to do in the past, is to sort of go on record recorded as to where he thinks it's going to land. That number is supported by where, our sales report five years ago. Also, what he's seeing, the brands that have sold recently in him. Assessed or additions to put on or other things. That's the number he's seeing. He's comparable between, he says 1.5 to 2. This is David's best guess, and we won't know officially until January.
That is the same. Thanks. I have a question, that it'll figure that...
Is it high or...
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think, I think the... Alongside that, there's new stuff coming online.
But I guess, sorry, but I guess the assistant, the assistant attorney, David. Right, so he's, sounds like, I talked to Sean over a while, he's already given us his professional opinion as to what the guidance is. So we have to assume that he's correct. Right. We have to assume that he's somewhat correct.
No, 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 that's fine. I understand we have to, you know, we have to set some framework around. The authority on that. But it includes a rebound and, you know, additions. You know, additions among my father, which is now 4% anyway, which is... Say that it makes up a good percentage. Sales aren't...
So 1.5% represents the 1.3 or 1.7 million.
That's correct. That's correct.
For about $95 million, we think, in our budget today.
So if you look at sort of what happened, what we had expected to happen, and where we ended up, unassigned fund balance at June 30th, 2017, $11,876. We had a favorable outcome of the $2.5 million that will come back. Reversing basically for the 2018 budget. Expect as we have always done, maybe about $500,000 to be able on tax collection. Lose about $80,000, $80,000 best case in state aid bonds. So that would leave us at 2.30 of 2018 with an almost $14 million fund balance. Remember, the reserve percentage is based off of the actual budget for the year. So it's always good to think of the whole level of fund balances as well as the percentage of the budget. So if we were thinking about trying to stay at that $13 million plus range, we could potentially give back $1 million of fund balance or reserves to help get to that. We can have a healthy discussion with the Board of Finance about that.
Good, and good after the board, to be back to the great...
Well, but on what the... Yes, fair enough, but that's based on estimates of what it's going to have pushed plus expenditures or reductions we have. I agree with you, have a target, sort of balance. All right?
Sure. If I could also just play out, and we've talked about this in the past, this obviously doesn't include the other things we use, you know, the contingency, or sorry, the rainy day fund for it, which is add winters supplemental appropriations recommended by the Board of Selectmen. Or additional mid-year cuts we may lose from those state amenities. But I'd say best case there because 880 is the sum of those two where we lost in the budget, plus the 531 of the last week. It goes next week or next month with another half of the income. Just make sure people know what's going to be included.
So this, I took my hat to my predecessor, Mark, working close to Sean. Developed this sort of forward-looking model of capital planning, debt service, and principal repayment on bonded projects. And as a way to try to think about how we fit large capital projects into our future plans. What we encourage ourselves to pay in terms of the debt that we issue. Now, we issued the brown, dark brown bars represent all of the debt that we issued through the bond operating in June. And so that has to be repaid over all nine, 10 years, or 10 years. Goes out to 2020. And then the next would be the debt that we would issue in the fiscal 2019 year. And the dark blue represents another change margin. I added bonded in 2021. And it does cover all of the capital projects, correct?
Yeah, all capital projects that were on the final CIP as adopted are included here. Obviously, no other projects, as we're planning this for 19, no other projects for 2023 or on are included, which we borrow probably for 2023 issuance, but...
So one of the other things we did last year was that we received a dip in 2018 budget as part of taking up contingencies and delaying those projects. We did not use up to 6% of the budget to cash them, to respend for projects that were not bonded. And so this assumes that we would return to that practice in subsequent years to help fund those before we actually bonded them, starting in 2020 and 2021. So everybody understands, you know, how that works. So we were very conservative with what's going about for the 2018 budget. So... That's where we are coming from. I think a lot of looking pieces we go into our worksheet that comes up with the NO rate. And this will basically keep the NO rate, it will be at a NO rate.
This is always... Hi, Jeff. Yeah. We're trying to simplify this every year. So what we have here, again, with the $2.5 million contingency removed, then an underlying 1.75% increase as drawn out on the slides. An adjustment, as you mentioned earlier, from what the state said they're going to give us in fiscal 19. Remember, they passed a two-year binding budget. There are numbers there for fiscal 19, whether we believe them or not. This spreadsheet at the moment is not leading into the 20% reduction that can be adjusted. And then ultimately, with the $1 billion, here's that same slide you saw earlier, $1 billion of reserves to get back down to around 14%. The mill rate would be remaining, this is the town, mill rate 38.76. Go down half a mill to 38.26.
So that's using $1 million fund balance to stay under the 40, 400s. So there's still a lot of pressure on your guys' expenditure budget, this is going to need to tax. Keep your house heating heavy, but the town moving forward. All right? Any questions about this?
So Rob, the impact of moving the capital line back to where it was, is the $670,000 straight there in that retirement?
Right.
So that's the plus, basically.
You're also getting some auto back to help with chunks of something.
Yeah, there's, you have a large increase here. It's the 5.6 we got for 32 million cap on cars to, but now no cap for 45 cap on cars. Generally, that will perform.
Other comments or questions?
That 1.4 is in addition to the 800 before taking it on this year. So the key element is 2.2.
On prior tax. Which one do you want?
The state agent. So you're assuming an additional 20% beyond the 800,000 we already did.
Ah, no, interesting. So the number I have in here, I've actually, I've hidden them here. Trying to keep this simple.
I'm shocked.
There's actually more. But this number rolls up, so these are the numbers the state gave us in fiscal, no, sorry, this is what we budgeted for fiscal 18. This is what the second year of the adopted budget says we will get in fiscal 19. They haven't cut that yet. We're in the middle of cutting it for fiscal 18. But these are the numbers that roll up. What I have is this cell simply takes those numbers above and uses it by 20% or whatever you put in this sum. So it's basically saying, we don't believe year two of the budget by a factor of 20% reduction.
So the 880 is known at this point.
Not with a million or eight.
And we're assuming either 600,000 or...
And fiscal 18, right.
That supports the...
That's right. So that supports a belief that this is going to fall from what we budgeted this year to what we're planning for next year. But yeah, that 880 is ultimately fiscal 18. We're assuming that we get offset by the expenditure contingency. It's going to eat into how faithful we are this year in that returning or not to any...
And 20% look pretty good, so they're calling it.
Yeah, this was before last week. You know, and you can sort of change it.
It's not irrational, but...
Or you're going to say it's going to be exactly as it is here?
For my benefit and any others, what is the difference, Sean? Can you explain between that 883 number and the 9 something number that's been published in the paper? So it's all exactly, it's 900 and something that seems fair is going to receive.
I don't, I haven't seen that number today. The only other, I mean, sometimes there are a few non-general fund items that were adjusted. I didn't see them being adjusted in this recent clockback, so I don't know them. Often when we were sending out those iterations of budget adjustments, the state includes as aid to us, because it is, it's dollars out the door to them, Town Hall Road and Losip. We don't budget those as general fund revenue. And so sometimes, if there was an adjustment or if you're proposing delaying another year of Losip, that could be another $100,000 hit. It's a real hit. It's not a hit that hits our mill rate per se. It would create a deficit in one of the 300, one of the CNR funds.
But you don't draw it separately with the 976?
I can double check it, yeah.
So that may also include the $100,000, so that's a...
Yeah, the total of the circuit breaker and the renter's rebate is about $100,000, so that...
Yeah, that's what I wanted to hear.
Historically, they've never published those numbers during... It's historically, they've never published those numbers during, we call the state emails and budgets, but that's, that's, those are real dollars. And that's a fair point, I should probably include an additional $100,000 off in that roll up for the balance, now that we know it's.
Let me try to, with he least here, I looked over at John Hampton's face, and I were talking about what we might anticipate for callbacks for next year and year two of the budget. So I thought it was down at 20%.
Wait, not in a witty eyebrow raising, it might mean go up.
I guess my only thoughts are, not to sound like a broken record here, it's been an honor, a privilege to serve this board and my esteemed colleagues, and I'm really proud of what we were able to do this past year, managing through, way absurdly to provide a mill rate that still kept us under 40. And I was like a broken record, but I, I think that we can sustain that for a period of time and more competitive ceramic plans. That would be hopey, hopeful, to have a 10% policy. Fund, recognizing a lot of those, in any of that, you know, I do, I do believe that I mean, wouldn't be able to ask if we were to exceed that on ongoing basis. Unfortunately, I had to come target as well. We know for those towns that contain company reserves, that if we go above our 10 and 12%, it's just a target for essentially, I would say sweeping, which is what happened in the state agencies, and I've seen happen, but certainly actions, but it's affordable to come in and just take the funds away from us. That's what I would think there, and I, again, I guess my parting words, I just would love to see us preserve since areas in place where it's not just a little field, you have, we can have in first given comes and socioeconomic and other diversity, I would love to see in our county, while I'm, I'm doing what we do in the seahouse, I applaud our, our cooperative schools and project choice, and I just think anything we can do to maintain us as a true kind of community of diversity, except that we have some diversity now, but we do not lose that for a long time.
Appreciate it.
The only way I can echo your point about if our reserves get too big, unfortunately, the personal little minds of some people at the state level, it's like they just see it as, oh, all those guys got plenty of money, let's go get their money. I've heard that from governor's staff, so like, hey, well, you guys, not like, why are you running a bank? Because that's where the money is. Oh, well, why are you running the town? Because they got money in their charge. And, you know, so let's go get theirs.
I wonder what the difference in the numbers would be if we just took, and I'm just, you know, 45 million out of our reserves, right? Even though we don't make these targets necessarily, but is it worth it in the long run versus what we would save on bonding across the country? No, we may get our bond rates reduced, I'm saying, but the difference in what we, and those interest rates may not, you know, right? We're doing all this to save a triple A, and I'm wondering in the long run, would the numbers shake up? Is it worth it?
So do you think that we would get more state aid if we reduce our reserves?
I think we would get less cut.
Just a small, I think we'd have to take longer. I think consistency.
Yeah, actually, I'm just throwing it out there.
I think ultimately, we would end up gaining people on our bonds. And that might have led down to the, our back to make our services. But I create that. The difference between triple A and B, B rating. We should have, all of our backers should have the ability to be on these calls, but I was on the call with Sean, and it's not, it's not just financial, it's attitude. And so willingness to give the bond of reserves back would be an attitude that would not be supportive of, you know, it's a, there's a fair amount of subjectivity to bond rating as well.
So what we have to keep in mind, we've had a triple A rating while we've been at 10 to 12%. So it wouldn't necessarily follow that stating that we're going back to 10 to 12%, but it results in a bond rate.
No, I agree, so I'm just going to stay in that range, but I think we're, we're as subject to attack at 10 as we are at 14. We would gain nothing by, by having 14 as it relates to necessarily bond rate. All right. I want to give the boards a chance to comment, ask questions, make points.
Rob, I appreciate the presentation, I think it's really clean and clear, so we appreciate the guidance still, and I think we understand the challenges that are out there. One thing, I mean, we've had some conversations about looking forward and planning our budget process differently, which we have in the works with our, our board, but one thing I would, I would ask your board to consider out of the discussion about when we talk about the main drivers in the budget, we certainly look at personnel, and we look at the insurance line item. And last year, our insurance increase was a million dollars. I know leases was at an all-time high as well. This year, when we roll it up and look at the state factors, we're at about $700,000 in an increase. We're self-insured, some of that is a result of our internal service fund balance, which is not as healthy as it needs to be. So this is more or less, I guess, a policy question, you know, conversation about that fund balance. If you go back a couple of years, we made some pretty, you know, at the time, some moves to move $3 million into the OPEB fund, which we definitely yielded benefits from the OPEB increase was beneficial to us, but the magnitude of it in comparison to the health care increase is very small. So I would wonder if the board would be open to a conversation of assessing the values in the OPEB account. They have $15 million, it's very heavily funded, which is a positive thing, along with the simultaneous policy question of the internal service fund. Because if we, you know, if we're talking about moving dollars around and using reserves, if we can move some level of funding that people would be comfortable with back into these internal service fund, set a policy of what that reserve level should look like, we can smooth our increases more effectively. If we're looking to move a needle year to year, that would be a way in the short term to look at absorbing a fixed cost that's not as drastic as moving money from the fund account. So I would just ask, you know, for conversation at some point December, whenever, as we do our planning process, as we know, those are 75, 80% of the costs. Last year, we know we took 12 and a half FTE, our loan is only scheduled to go down like 40 people, so we don't have as many, as much flexibility from a staffing standpoint, so I'm looking for other places.
So I'll say for myself, I would like to encourage us to consider this. Matt, and I have talked about this over years or so, and at first, my initial reaction was I don't get it, it's expense, I don't understand it, but I'm starting to understand that having an appropriate fund balance against good year and bad year claim experience helps smooth this experience. So I would, I would encourage working with us, with Sean, to present that to us, so that we can think about that and look at it. Not specifically Rob, the OPEB, but look at those two fund balances, you're trying to accomplish the same thing, and be sure they're relative to the size of the obligation and its impact, the fund balance's impact on the annual expenditure line, and we have that appropriately, the money appropriate inside. This could be a use of fund balance switching as well, that would be beneficial. I'm open to doing it as long as everybody else is.
I would just add to that, one of the things we, Board of Ed, is they switched to a high dividend plan, which means they're getting less revenue to fund, which we won't realize those savings, but there is a little bit of a lag, so to do that, that's added.
I won't be quarterly meetings, so the OPEB balance is, we don't want to, we don't want to put it in jeopardy, but between the two, I think there might be a more appropriate allocation, let's just do it at that. So work with us, maybe on, we can present that.
I have a few things just to point out, when you raised it about the Towne Road, if you recall, there was a huge shift in public work, because we had a healthy balance in Towne Road, and so we knew we could use a little bit for the 1D, and we are anticipating an $8 million or $6 million hit. And policy questions, how much do you want to keep the reserve there? We have some pieces of equipment when they break their 300,000, so you do need to keep a bit of the healthy, but what that level is, I don't know, I guess it'll be Eric and the new town manager, but I would certainly expect to see that back in the operating budget, it's just a better practice to do that. In terms of EMS, we can anticipate some sort of number in the 80,000 range, and Melissa Appleby did a great analysis of that recently, and Sean asked him at EMS, Mr. Ponver, and we did, Melissa did the presentation at our last warning, so if you want to see that, it's worth looking at that. So that's going to be something I don't think we can ignore, it's a need or required to be that way. In terms of, one more thing that's out there, there was the Medicare, Medicare savings program was cut substantially, and that could be about a $1.3 billion impact to some of our residents. What that does is it provides financial assistance for medical and prescription drug coverage for seniors and disabled individuals, pays for Medicare Part D premium, provides Part D coverage, state income threshold for this program is cut in half. By the way, it means our seniors are going to be suffering a little bit more because of this. And so one of the things you may see from the Board of Selectment is a relook at the tax evasion policy for seniors in order to help accommodate that by, in case it will be a substantial gap, our budget for social services is very concerned about that. The other thing I wanted to put out there, I don't know if this is clear, but if we are from a new attack, decrease or flat tax, it may be worth looking at the assumption rate of returns. We're at seven, the state is actually at 6.9, so it may be worth looking at whether now we are to make that change. I know we've been, in our hearts, we want to get down to 6.5 at some point, but maybe a year to think about that. And finally, I would just, oh, I do want to bring to the board's attention, because there will likely be another overage, Deepwater Wind has had about 36,000, we have some funds that we can use within the budget, but really all our contingency is on, and I do expect that to go up because the state council, they require us to be there multiple times, which means our consultants have to be there multiple times, which we had to pay them. So it could be anywhere.
That's a fiscal 19.
It is a fiscal 19, but I just wanted to bring it to your attention, it's going to rear its ugly head, probably sooner rather than later. And finally, you know, along with what Matt was saying, one of the things our residents always say, oh, there's a budget increase and a tax increase, and the answer is no, not always, sometimes it does, but there are so many other things. So I think, as they said, that we're as willing to think about what is the goal in terms of tax increases, and if there's no tax increase, there are many ways to get there, as I can budget, as Matt said, a lot of the reason that there's no new program going on with Matt and with Dr. Gershman, so it's going to be a lot of fixed costs that are out there. But there may be ways to come in with flat tax because of some of the other things that are going on, so just keep that in mind. I don't know that I, that the Board of Selectmen will be able to get to a 1% of the buy-in rate, just look at the numbers, it's going to be very hard to do that. But if the goal is really, what is the tax rate, what's the impact on our residents, I think that's a helpful, good, but after that is in addition to just expenditure budget.
I would like to ask one other, sort of, you know, just one other topic, which is sort of long-range planning, this is mostly around, you know, at, you know, talking about last year about sort of the dialogue, and you know that there was a meeting, the facilities committee, of course, was not even there, but I would just encourage especially the Board of Ed to think long-term strategically, some big thing for me about the number, the location of the grades, the number of schools, the location, how many total schools, even to the extent that I personally have an appetite for expenditure in coming budgets for consultation or long-term planning around. Seems very marked by Board of Ed, school composition in 2025, and so that we had a funded plan, or at least it's outside of that. I'm sure that we've done this over the years, maybe not all of that. I would, I would, I would be tolerant of that in both of the, as for
You know what, I have a, Neil had a handout just in case it did come up, quick, he can go through a few bullets, it plays into just an initial conversation of Henry James, and our board is going to have a capital workshop, fourth, I think, I think, April, December. We did an initial capacity study at Henry James and potentially starting some conversation about what would that school look like as a six through eight school. So Neil, why don't you just kind of go through the basics real quick? We just wanted you to have that to let you know that we are having conversations and starting to take a look.
So facilities and enrollment is a group that's existed for a good six or seven years, and the question has always come up about as the population of Henry James was scheduled to shrink to more like 300 students in a grade, what would it take to add sixth grade into that facility? So upon the cancellation of the spring referendum on these projects, we took a pretty serious look at it and worked with what was the phase three Henry James floor plan, the 23 million dollar base, which changed the floor plan a little bit because it included larger science rooms, one of the big, if it is of that project was modern science facilities. So took a look, took at what, what portion of the current building perhaps you could borrow to begin to put sixth grade in. And if you think about Henry James, and if you stood in front of Henry James to the right, the eight, there's a north wing that got added, a north portion, eight classrooms that got added on in about 2002 or 2003. And so the concept we started with was, could you use those eight classrooms as the base for a sixth grade end of the building, if you will, and could you fit seventh and eighth grade and kind of everything to the left of that? The answer of our, the answer to that question in our past, he said, he was, yes, you can do that. If you plan on three teams, seventh grade and three teams of eighth grade, you could pretty comfortably fit seventh grade on the first floor of the remainder of the building, eighth grade on the second floor, and then begin a sixth grade base in those eight classrooms. The extension of the, we're working with the architect and Burke and Aaron, you then look over here, and in kind of, in addition to the base project that existed last year, it's including a few more sixth grade classrooms, and kind of turning it into a connected building. And that's kind of what we've studied now, to say, what would be the increase in capital expense to now make yourself a building that's going to easily have a capacity for probably 1,100 students as, and be able to include sixth and eighth grade? So this is the concept we've been working with the Henry James administration, we presented it to facilities and enrollment, and the plan is for the rest of the Board of Ed to, in a workshop capacity, be able to talk about that concept in terms of long-range.
And how would it make the event better for?
That would be a back end to that conversation. From a capacity standpoint, it would be possible.
Thank you, thank you, Neil. Any other questions about that? Okay, so that, unless anybody has anything else that they'd like to bring up, I think that will sort of conclude the tribe work part of our meeting. You're welcome to stay, we have a few very exciting events that can take care of you in a minute. Thank you all for coming, we feel we're working all of you, we're all doing.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Did you have to move to the start of the slide?
Let's see, why do we have to move up?
Yeah, it's the mill rate, I guess we can get, you would have to go to down.
Fiscal 19 or 18? Or you're appointed?
I'm just saying, moving it back up to.
When you said, you only said it for one year, so when, when we adopt a budget next year, you'll be setting, in this case, like, the olden days, we would just be setting one mill rate, and that applies to your House of Lords.
Right, right.
It's a backswing. Right.
Well, I appreciate you saying that, everybody, so I think.
I understand what you're saying, we needed to start, this is a long dialogue, we're starting with very little information. We can all start with zero.
That's going to be the case forever.
Understood, understood. All right. No?
Could it change what's the funding?
Fair enough. All right. Let's move on. So, the minutes, Jeff had one.
Each two of the minutes where we talked about, pull up here. Just one change was to, anyways, where we're talking about the mandates, I think it was suggested that people, each one of the back four, there's also five to have board offer you a certain amount of mandates. And I think it was suggested, and then the intention of the board was out of the program for legal counsel to review those items. So, I think it was suggested, not advised, that they would.
Did you get that changed?
All right.
So, would that change? I think that's turning.
I don't know if you're suggesting.
Well, there's a big difference there. All right, I agree with you. Okay, moving on. Item five, approval of fiscal year 17 supplemental appropriations of $15,800 to close capital budget. Sean introduced this topic in our last meeting. A little amounts here that need to be closed out, we spent hours discussing what we should have $20 over here, amounts actually smaller than we found that were not appropriated, but I think it's appropriate to clean this up so that it's fewer of the accounts opening, we could do a lot, so I vote for a motion.
So, who?
Second.
All fair to say. All right. Approve supplemental appropriation for $5,000 to cover our share of the cost of the closed vote again. The controversy.
You have much choice on that. Denied, I don't see anything.
Yeah, so I'm looking for a motion for this. Group by Mara, seconded by Kevin, all fair to say aye. Next motion is to approve the Simsbury Regional Probate Court capital request for $6,000. I understand that we are providing a barrier and protection as a probate court, these employees should not have been left open to cost of damage. Yeah, and this will be our share of the town's Simsbury's share of this spending.
Proportionate, so $6,000.
$6,000 is the total amount, right?
And we pay proportionally.
Yeah, so we will, we need to appropriate it, and it will be reimbursed by the other towns, proportionate to our populations.
What is it that's going on?
Sure, so they've had some recent, specifically one recent incident, an ongoing incident, I guess it's fair to say, that they felt the need, based on where they're located in Town Hall, and some threats that were made, that they'd like to be less involved. And this is basically a privacy glass, similar to like a bank teller glass that would be up there at the probate court. For those that have been to the counter, they looked at various different options, and this was the one that they're comfortable with, and recommended.
So, I have a question about, I had this day where in the legislature, when I was in the legislature, that the probate courts are supposed to be self-sustaining based on the not minimal fees that they levy on estates, even if you don't go through probate, which I experienced recently, they get you with the healthy fee, even though nothing was involved. If it's not really, I just don't know what's, what's the obligation, if they're supposed to be self-sustaining, why are the towns being hit up for relatively small amounts? It's not like they're huge capitals, shouldn't this be part of their story?
Capital, it's not, capital expenditures, so it's slightly different than that. So, we did the pre-probate course, there wasn't initial capital investment. This is a matter of somewhat urgency from their perspective, and so, I mean, I.
So, but, so, let me finish, it goes back to the same kind of question we started with, someone, you know, he was painting the wall, is that capital? And, you know, what defines capital versus operating? And this is, I'm being a penny pincher here, I know, but whose, and what, do we have a clear definition of whose obligation is what? Is all capital hours, including maintenance? What goes in their operating budget, or is what they collect?
So, one, capital is fine, that's statute. As a dollar. No, as a type of expense for, for the operating capital, justified by statute. And my understanding was, was the probate from my town of Southern was sort of like a landlord for the probate court, you know, tenant, and so, just as the tenant would come and make.
So, all maintenance, is that ours? That's all, he's one of the mill.
That's, correct me if I'm wrong, but that's.
And they're part of their operating budget, so their salaries and all their other stuff is paid through by the state, but they have their own operating budget, of which the Board of Selectmen contributes a share, and the other three towns contribute a share, and that's for things like office supplies, copy and paper. I mean, it's small, it's $2,100 for the town of Simsbury's share, or the largest share, but they have about a, what is it, I think it's a six, it's a six or about an $8,000 total operating budget, operating, again, with no salaries involved. But, so it is like a landlord relationship, but we also, I guess, are responsible for the supplies, and that goes back to when they were regionalized, 2011, 2010 or 2012.
I think, my understanding, the original intent was that they'd be self-funded, but they have been cut that as well, to some of the money that they've required for aid for appointing attorneys for those in need, et cetera, et cetera. And so, there are a lot of legal requirements that have not been funded, and I do think they went off, so they're struggling.
All right, thank you, I appreciate that.
All right. So, we need a motion for approval.
So, who? Second. All fair to say aye.
All right. And the last is to approve the regular reading schedule, which should see the facts of our final, which will be in somebody else's.
It's a morgue. We, just to recap, the only real change from the draft you received at the last meeting is that Tuesday, February 20th, has been returned to February 20th, we initially proposed the 13th due to some vacation week, but we decided to keep it the third Tuesday. And the only other sort of exception is that Tuesday, September 25th, is the fourth Tuesday due to the Periyanka order falls in September. And again, now is the time to make any other adjustments, you have the October meeting, traditionally include public audience, you have the November meeting, that's similar to tonight's meeting, that one is the second Tuesday, correct, Melissa, and because this is only Thanksgiving, we could change that to the 20th. If you want it to be Thanksgiving week, but I mean, this year, we had planned on that.
I had an idea this once.
That's fine.
This was done in my special.
So, and then otherwise, you know, those budget dates are, and we've all been through this before, that, that's the target, the May 15th referendum, this scenario, obviously, that's going to determine the number of hearings, and you can have to, says you want, we need to do the date again, hopefully don't have to do that, but, you know, we certainly have some liability there, but I think otherwise, it's pretty much fine.
All right. Do we have to actually approve this?
You do, actually, it goes to the town clerk, it's filed with the town clerk, and he's all becoming a regular person.
So, I moved that we approved the final.
Seconded by Jeff, all fair to say aye. Oh, it wasn't Jeff, it was Jeff, he was the idiot.
Yeah.
All fair to say aye. All right. And with that, I would look for a motion for a happy Thanksgiving, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Funding for Simsbury Community Television is provided in part by contributions from viewers like you. Thank you.